Hello and thank you so much for joining us on this episode of our Shaina and Arapahoe Productions podcast. And today we are talking with Ramona Talbair from the Office of the Tribal Council Coordinator. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me.
Would you please share us, what's your official title?
My official title is Administrative Assistant to the Tribal Council Coordinator.
All right, we've got some stuff here to talk about and I'll just let you jump in and kind of, well, the first thing I would say is like, we're talking about a special tribal council meeting on Saturday, August 16th at 10:00 AM at the Respect Gym in Concho. And you can take it from there.
We will begin at 8:00 AM with breakfast. We encourage tribal members to get there as early as possible. We will be having a demonstration of the remote participation. So we would like tribal members to get there to get registered if possible. If we're able to do it that late, to get ready for the meeting. The roll call will begin at 10:00 AM. On the agenda are four items. There are four constitutional amendments and one remote participation amendment. The four constitutional amendments will be on the ballot for the November election. And they are, you know, we've been through constitutional amendments before. The first one is to reduce the percentage of voter participation in constitutional amendments, special elections for constitutional amendments. Right now, the Constitution has it at 30% of registered voters. And this resolution will reduce that to 15% of registered voters. And the purpose for that is to get constitutional amendments changed, made more easily to the Constitution. The 30% is too high and only one constitutional amendment has been passed at that percentage.
And how, and you said only one has been passed since?
Since the Constitution came around in 2006.
2006, really?
Right, and so that one is to lower the blood quantum to less than one quarter.
Do you know what kind of percentage we had?
No, I don't have the percentages on that, but I know that that election was held during a November election where the governor was on the ballot. And so that's why these constitutional amendments will be on the November ballot, because they hope to get more people involved, you know, running for, electing governor, lieutenant governor, for legislators, all those seats would get more people involved.
I want to come back to this question, but yeah, let's go on. You said, you said a resolution, go ahead, finish, finish reading your list there.
Okay, then you can ask questions.
Sure.
So the second resolution is to set term limits for the governor and lieutenant governor. So the term limits for the governor are now zero, I mean unlimited term limits. You can be elected as many times as you can be elected by the people. And this would change it to allow the governor and lieutenant governor to serve three consecutive terms and then sit out one term. So sit in, serve for 12 years basically, and sit out for four years. That's what this changes that to. And again, if the governor and lieutenant governor is not elected at any time, you know, it would be less than the 12 years, but they could serve 12 years maximum. The third constitutional amendment is regarding residency requirements. Now, this one has gotten quite a bit of feedback from tribal members. Right now, the Constitution says that a governor, lieutenant governor, shall physically reside in a voting district. That's it, from the beginning to the end. This constitutional amendment would change that to say, "At the time of filing a nomination petition, a candidate for governor or lieutenant governor can reside anywhere. If elected, the governor or lieutenant governor must reside within a voting district in the Shaina Arapahoe Territory for the duration of their term, be a resident of that district for the duration of the term. Physical residency within the Shaina Arapahoe Territory is outlined in the Constitution must be established at the time the candidate takes their oath of office." And then it goes on further to set the same residency requirements for a legislator. They have to live, no, when they, when they file, they can physically reside anywhere. And when elected, they must reside within their voting district for the duration of their term and be a resident of that district for the duration of their term. Then the fourth, I mean, the fourth, the fourth resolution at the special tribal council meeting is to allow remote participation at future tribal council meetings. We can talk about that.
There's going to be a demonstration of that happening at this special tribal council meeting. But even if it, and even, even if, if and when it goes perfectly, then it still has to be voted on and that resolution passed for that to be applied at the
Annual.
Annual, in October, okay.
Yes.
Well, let's maybe just jump in here. One thing I wanted to ask you about is the first one, which is as a resolution to amend the Constitution, reducing the percentage of voter participation in constitutional amendments. And you had said that there has been one constitutional amendment since 2006, when the, since the Constitution was ratified, I suppose.
That was to lower the blood quantum.
Yeah, and that was just, what, a couple of years ago, right?
Yes, it was a few years ago.
And I believe that you said, so right now it says a 30%?
Yes.
And tell me how, tell us how you, how the office, how your office came to like a 15% and not a 20, 25, 21, I don't know.
There was some discussion on that. There was discussion on what it should be lowered to. Everyone agreed, everyone that was part of this discussion agreed that it should be lowered to allow for constitutional amendments to happen. But then the amount that it should be lowered to was under discussion quite a bit. And some suggested 10%, 15%. 15% was decided on to keep it from being too low, to keep it for the Constitution from being changed, maybe at a whim.
I was going to say 10%.
That's a little low.
That to me sounds like there, you could theoretically, you could make a lot of changes and they might get out of, out of hand.
Right.
I mean, just at first glance, what it sounds like.
Right, right, so that's why it was not made 10%, it was put at 15%. And so we hope that that would work.
But, and I'm just here to, just kind of here to play devil's advocate, you know. It also to me sounds like, I mean, 30%, really? Almost sounds kind of low. Does, I mean, just on its face, doesn't it?
Sure, well, that's the way that when the Constitution was written, when anything is written, when anything is developed, you don't really know how tribal members are going to react to it. You don't know how they're going to take it. You have no idea how they're going to perform unless you try it. And so trying it with 30%, to us, is just too high, because constitutional amendments need to be made.
But we, couldn't we argue that it's just basically by voter participation?
We want to talk about voter apathy? We could talk about apathy.
I'm here to, I'm here to, you know, I'm here to ask questions.
Yeah, that's a whole different question, voter apathy.
Let's talk about that, let's talk about that.
Oh my goodness, everybody talks about voter apathy. That's the biggest problem that we have with the tribes.
And I think you could probably bring that up with many tribes.
Sure, with many tribes. But I know that some tribal members are disappointed in the tribal government and they want, they want nothing at all to do with the tribal government.
Which seems to me defeats the purpose.
Sure.
If you, if you, I mean, everybody, anybody can complain.
But then at the same time, we're not, we're not regular, we're not regular voters. I mean, this voting is new to us. Before the voting came around, which is like, to me, like a popularity contest, before that came around, you achieved positions based on your performance, the way that you lived, your accomplishments, things, your sacrifices that you made. That's how you achieved leadership positions, not by how many votes you get, how popular are you? That's different. And so it's new to us. It's only been with us less than 100 years, right? For thousands of years, we were not like that. So this is new to us and we're not, we don't act like any other voting group. And so when we get mad at a tribal government, we cut them off, like that. And families should cut people off if you need to, cut off, you know, and cut off the government. And so hopefully with, with the new enrollees coming in, our enrollment is now 16,000 and a few. Hopefully, these younger people will be more interested. And so maybe that'll offset some of the voter apathy. So voter apathy also could be maybe some, some tribal members can't get to the polls or some tribal members now cannot notarize their ballots when they mail them in as out of district voters, out of district ballots. So, you know, things like that need to be addressed. And so, but that's something that, like the election board, I'm sure, is wondering how to overcome voter apathy. And we're wondering how to overcome voter apathy. So we think that with the remote participation, that would help a lot with voters. But again, we'll see, we have no idea, no idea.
Everything's a great idea until it doesn't work.
Sure.
And I'm not saying, I'm not suggesting it will, I'm just saying it's, you have to, you kind of have to, you get to try out all kinds of things.
Right.
Well, you know, since you were talking about voter apathy, how much of that factored into this 15%?
Sure, voter apathy.
I mean, I mean, because we're talking about 30% is less than a third. And if you cut that in half, then you're talking about a sixth. I mean, I mean, you're kind of making like, one sixth of the total population can make a constitutional amendment?
Well, just the same as 75 members can make policy changes at the tribal council meetings out of an enrollment of 16,000, 75 members can make that. So again, if we could start all over, would we do it differently? Would we go back to our traditional ways to make sure everybody has a voice? How far back do we want to go? And how do we, how can we fix this? So, but the 30%, it just, that was just too high for us. And again, we'll try the 15% if we can get constitutional amendments changed after this 15%. This, these constitutional changes that I'm talking about now are still subject to the 30%. So the 15% is not going to go into effect until after it's passed, if it's passed. Right, so we'll see how these do. And I don't have the numbers in front of me, I was just starting to get the numbers late. But like, registered voters don't have, don't have that number. And I know that the registered voters is less than tribal council members.
Okay, yeah.
Totally different numbers. If you're tribal council, if you're 18 and above, you're automatically tribal council. Everybody has a voice.
Yeah, yeah.
Whereas registered voters, I have no idea the percentage. And I can get those numbers for the next podcast, so we can talk about voter apathy.
Yeah, I've heard those in the past, I just, I can't, like I said, nothing comes to mind right now. But I know that it's, well, you know, all over. I mean, we can talk about this last presidential election, I mean, numbers were down, so.
Right, right.
I understand that. Number two is a resolution to amend the Constitution for term limits for the governor and lieutenant governor. This was brought up last year, was it not?
It's been brought up before.
At the, there was a resolution at the last year's October meeting.
Right, right. And so these constitutional amendments, in some way, they're not new to tribal members. I think that the most significant one would be to lower the participation to 15%. And that would let tribal members know that there's a better chance of these passing or not passing based on their participation. And so this one has been brought up before, didn't pass because it didn't meet the 30%. So, and it's setting term limits, which are not mentioned for the governor and lieutenant governor at all in the Constitution.
Okay, so really what we're saying is these, these, number two, which that, the resolution for term limits, and number three, which is to amend the Constitution regarding residency, I can't read, residency requirements. Those two really depend on number one even happening.
Yes, yes.
It's, I mean, and obviously, I know, I realize, people who are listening and watching, you don't have this list in front of you, so I understand that, but.
The constitutional amendments really, and like I said, the constitutional amendments, except for the first one, lowering the percentage, you know, to 15%, these two, to number two and three, they're still subject to the 30%. So there's still a good chance they won't pass. So I'm sure that they'll come up again, when the percentage is lowered.
One, the question I had when you, when you first got here and I brought it up, and, which I wasn't clear on, and I, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. Can you help me understand and help our audience understand? This is a special tribal council meeting. And I was under the impression, well, I mean, I didn't know, I had to ask questions. It's, that means it still is a valid tribal council meeting. I guess the way to look at it is be, it's just an additional one before the, in addition to the main one in October, right?
If any tribal council meetings are called, special tribal council, they're in addition to.
Okay, it's not like a
It's not necessarily a precursor.
Or a prelim, something like that.
Right, it's not necessarily, no, it's just to deal with any items that tribal council wants to deal with. And there's two ways that a tribal council, special tribal council meeting can be called. One is by getting at least 150 signatures, which was done in this case.
I understand that was a close, close.
It was very close, it was close. We had, we had some difficulties getting signatures and the ceremonies came up and that really took a big chunk out. And so we passed, we barely got enough signatures with one to spare, so thank you all.
With one to spare?
Yes.
Man.
My help was with this.
That's truthfully by the, by the hair of your chinny chin chin.
Yeah, totally, yeah. So thank you to all tribal members for helping us with that. So, and we got that approved yesterday by the enrollment department. So we sent the public notice out yesterday. So tribal council meetings are called whenever tribal council meeting feels, you know, sees the need.
Sure. And I think, but the one that, the one thing that does stand out about this one is like, it needs to be, needs to be talked about and expressed, that this tribal council, it has a resolution to allow remote participation in voting for verified tribal members. But what is going to happen at this special tribal council meeting is a demo, a demonstration of how this would work.
Right, it'll be a live demonstration of how it'll work. And let's go back to the third resolution, if we could.
Oh, sure, sure, sure.
The constitutional amendment resolution. And getting signatures for the third tribal council, I mean, tribal constitutional amendment resolution. And that was the third one on the agenda, yeah, on the agenda.
Regarding residency requirements.
Residency requirements. I think this is the one that I heard the most comments on from tribal members as we were getting signatures. And most tribal members are against this. Some are for it, but this, this says that when you file to run, you can live anywhere. But you have to move to the tribal jurisdiction when you win. So that's, a lot of people have said things about that, even though.
What is, I mean, what are, what is the opposition? They're saying you shouldn't have to move from where you are?
No, they're saying that if you, if you're running from outside the districts, you have no connection to the people here.
Now, you know what, as an outside observer, I can understand that.
Sure.
I can see that.
It has been long held among tribal people, not necessarily only the Shaina Arapahoe's, but can give demonstrations of like civilized tribes. If you moved away, you were not a tribal member. If you moved away, you were, you were, you were not.
Yeah, I've heard stuff like that, sure.
Right, and so that's, that's why it's always been encouraged to stay close to your people. We're stronger together, stay close to your people, stay close to your family. If you go away, you always know where you're going to come back. Stay close to your people. You can go away, but you know you're going to come back. And so that, that, I'm sure that plays a big part in this. If you live outside the district, people say that you have no interest, you have no knowledge, you don't live the way we live, how can you know about us? How can you represent us? So they, they don't like that, a lot of people.
I, and this is just, again, this is just me as an outside observer. I would listen more, I mean, I don't, I, like I said, I'm an outside observer here. It seems to me if someone is, has, has moved away and they live in a different part of the country, but they are running for something, it seems to me that moving here before, before you even knew you might get elected, that seems to be a commitment. And I think maybe a lot of people see it that way. So I can see that, but then again, I can also see that, I mean, as if I were running for something, you know.
You would want to be here if you're going to represent the people here.
I would think that it would be easier to, to run.
Well, I can give you the other side of the coin, okay? So the other side.
But then again, once you, once you win, you gotta do it.
You're required to.
Yeah, you're required to do it.
So like, for example, there, there's another position, tribal council coordinator, where you're not required to live in district. And there's other positions you're not required, like election commission.
Even as serving, as, when you serve, you're not.
You're not, you're not required to live in district at all as a tribal council coordinator. You can live, you can live, for example, in Earlsboro or in Dallas, Texas, as the last two coordinators lived. And when they were elected, they moved in district. And so this is what's happening, I mean, that's what happened, is what this Constitution is saying could be allowed to happen. And so when they moved in district, were they good leaders of tribal council? So that's the question, can you be a good leader if you come from outside? So that's the question. And it could be that with the new enrollees, maybe their participation, they may say that you can, who knows?
Yeah.
But this is, this is for the people to decide. And this is like one of the first decisions, well, this actually went through like three, three decisions, like signing the petition, do you sign a petition? Do you want this on there? And I've had people say, I don't agree with a certain resolution, I'm not signing the petition. So once you get past that, these petitions have to, I mean, these resolutions have to pass at the tribal council meeting, the constitutional amendment resolutions. If they pass at the tribal council meeting, then they have to be passed by the voters, election. You know, those registered with the election commission, they have to be passed by those voters then.
So, you know, we're still.
And then they're still subject to 30% then.
In that regard, it is preliminary, it's not a preliminary, well, I suppose in a way it is. It's kind of like, well, I, I don't mean to confuse everybody. Obviously, in the way, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. In a way, I mean, to get to point C and D, you gotta, you gotta start with A and B. So it's kind of what we're doing here is, like I said, in my feeble mind, I'm trying to work it around.
I know, it's complicated and it's the tribal government. This is the government that we were given to work in.
And that's what these, these, these talks are about. We're just trying to get information out
Yes.
to the public who, like me, and maybe you, well, you, it sounds like you know a lot more than we do. We just want to, we don't want to, you know, muddle things up and muddy the waters more. We're just hoping to bring a little bit of clarity.
Right.
And, and, and give you the proper questions to ask if you have questions, definitely.
Yes, and I appreciate all your questions. Yes, please contact us, call anybody and ask questions, ask questions. And my other, my mother, she always said, if you get any benefits from the tribal government, you have a responsibility to at least pay attention to your tribal government.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Yeah, and tribal council is a good place to do that.
Okay, next, well, you want to get back to the remote participation?
Remote participation, yes, I'm ready for that.
You're ready now, okay.
Yes, just want to finish talking about the constitutional amendments.
Like I said, and so the idea is to promote, give the folks a, a working demonstration. And really quickly, talk about the vendor we're using.
Right, it's the same vendor that we use for the clicking devices to use to vote at the tribal council meetings.
And those seem to be, there's been a favorable.
Yes, we've had favorable, favorable reactions to that, yes. And as far as, I think a big question was, would we lose them to tribal council members? And I think the first time we only missed five.
That has happened a couple.
Yes, yes.
As I heard.
The first time we only missed five and somebody brought one back because she didn't realize it was around her neck. And so that's before, and they charge us $15 and I don't know the highest number. But they, they are given back, so that's not a problem. And so this company also has available technology to allow for real-time participation.
As I, as I understand, it's some sort of like a, is it basically an app that you would download?
Yes, it's basically an app they have, yes.
Now, is it on your phone or is it, is it a desktop only?
No, it's not desktop only, you can use it on your phone, a laptop, a computer, like the library, anywhere, anywhere you have access to the internet. And you will be registered based on, to allow for security, you'll be registered based on your enrollment number, your birth date, and your legal name, which everybody knows that. And so we're talking about security, we're talking about privacy and accessibility to all tribal members. And so there's no borders, you can do this anywhere. You can do it if you're in Japan or you can do it if you're in El Reno. And the reason for that, we didn't want to set any limits, any distance limits, because somebody may be bedridden and wants to take part, but they're not able to. Or somebody, you know, maybe working, be able to take breaks and listen, you know, listen to the meeting, things like that. So to make it accessible to everyone. And by the way, the legislators attend meetings remotely, even though the Constitution says that they must be in person. But their remote participation allows more to participate, you know, remote participation allows them to participate.
Yeah, I would, I would rather have.
Have them participate.
Than not be there at all, I mean.
Yes, so it's, it's not allowed, but it's being used. And so we're going to use technology to allow, because it's not denied in the Constitution. The Constitution doesn't deny it, so, yeah. And the cost is much lower than the gas cards. For a while, tribal council was giving gas cards to tribal members based on the distance that they lived from the meeting. And that got to be very expensive. At first, we were anticipating would be maybe $5,000 or $6,000. It gets up to maybe $14,000 per meeting. And so this would save the gas card.
That's not a small, that's not chump change.
No, especially since we can pay, I have the costs here, we can pay just a few thousand, 2,200 for up to 2,000 tribal members. And the cost, if we go up to 4,000 tribal members, it's just something like $2,400. So the cost of remote participation is so much lower than gas cards. So, or fiscal responsibility, that's what we're offering.
Okay.
One thing that the, we still will offer bus transportation to tribal members in the district, because it's called for in the Constitution, so that will still be available. And remote participation, it'll be a live demonstration. So one item that's going to appear on the tribal website is a link to enroll, to register for remote participation demonstration in August. That's not on the tribe's website yet, and I'll talk about the tribe's website, what they have for tribal council. But that can be done if you're going to be at the meeting or not at the meeting. If you're not going to be at the meeting, you want to try it out in August, please do so. If you're going to be at the meeting, you want to try it out, please do so, you register here. And we're going to be really pushing these registrations over the next few weeks, because we want people to participate. We want their voices to be heard, basically.
And that's one thing we, we were talking before we started to push those. You're, it looks like you're going to, the Office of the Tribal Council Coordinator will be involved in some other events.
We're getting ready, we're going to go to community meetings.
Because we're looking at, back to school's coming up and I know JOM is like, they're on the road.
Right.
That was like, they're hitting like every community in western Oklahoma. It sounds like you guys are going to jump in some of those?
Right, so tribal council would need, we would like to get this information out on the resolutions and the remote participation, also resolution writing for the regular tribal council meeting. We want to get this information out to tribal members, but when we go to community meetings or listening sessions or whatever, and all programs have the same problem, is that nobody comes. It's hard to get like, apathy, talk about apathy again. So we're partnering.
You would, you would think with JOM though, there's free stuff.
Right, so we're partnering, this is why we're.
Everybody needs school supplies.
This is why we're partnering with JOM. We're partnering with JOM and also with the Health Department. So on Monday, Albert went to the Family Wellness Day at Watonga. This Friday, we're going to be at the Family Wellness Day in Clinton. And July 25th in El Reno DOH building, and August 1st at Concho ERC. Now, going to these will, will be able to give information to tribal members, because there are quite a few vendors there and there are children activities. And so tribal members are encouraged to go there to get health information. And so at these meetings, we'll be able to give this information. And Albert will also give like resolution writing training, that's going to be part of, on the table, on the table, because it's, that's been asked for. And then finally, what we're going to do is, not finally, we hope to get other programs that we can partner with. But we're going to be going with the Johnson O'Malley Backpack, School Supply and Backpack distributions. And that's coming up really quickly. It'll be at Yukon, Clinton, Arapahoe, Thomas, Weatherford, Sealing, Woodward, Enid, Kingfisher, Hammond, Piedmont, Mustang, Oklahoma City.
Make sure you go to Woodward.
Yeah, we're going to Woodward, yes, we're going to Woodward, yes.
That's a long trip, hey.
Yeah, yeah, Woodward.
But it's a, it's a good time. Well, it sounds like the office is, you know, things are happening. And I, I think, you know, the idea is to make sure we get, it's, it's just about getting the information out.
Right.
And that's, you know, it's, it maybe, it's maybe, maybe part of voter apathy is that they don't quite understand how it works.
Could be.
And maybe.
It's complicated.
Yeah.
With the new Constitution. I'd just like to talk about the tribal council branch on the tribe's website. This is a place you're going to be able to do three things near the top of the website. Remote participation at the Angel Tribal Council Meeting in October. Register there if you're not going to be at the tribal council meeting, but you still want your voice to be heard. The next item is register for a gas card for the August meeting. If you're driving in from outside a 200 mile radius, I'm not sure of the mile radius. And this is, this will be part of it, but if you're going to be needing a gas card. Then the third item that's going to be on there later today is to register for the remote participation demonstration in August. We'll try to get as many people as we can register there so they can see on their phones. Albert Okrow, the tribal council coordinator, and I got a demonstration of that. It's really simple, really simple and easy to use.
What we're basically saying is everyone who wants to take part in this, you've got to register. You can't just show up and say, I mean.
Well, you can show up at the August.
No, no, let's not even say that, because people.
Well, no, we want people to show up. Okay, so the registration for the demonstration is for everyone, if you're going to be there or not.
But if you're going to participate, we would prefer that you register.
So that you can see it on your phone, otherwise you'll have to look at other people's phones.
Yeah, that's all we're saying.
Right, that's the same thing. Yeah.
You don't want to tell folks you can wait till the last minute, because you know what people will do? They'll wait till the last minute.
And the deadline for that is going to be August 8th.
Okay.
August 8th, and that'll be on the, on the tribe's website, telling the deadline.
Is shine@arapahu, is it? Somebody help me out.
It's a tribal website.
It's not dot com, it's.
I think it's dot org maybe.
I should know this.
Go to shana rapaho tribe.
Well, that's embarrassing, folks.
Right.
We can edit this out, no, we won't do that.
Right.
But it's not difficult, but the thing is, the great thing is, you know, you can go there and you can, there's a search bar at the top if you're not sure where to go and you can find stuff.
Right.
You're looking for the tribal council branch.
Right, click on there.
And this is where you will find the information about pre-registering.
Pre-registering, also look under forms and files. You see different agendas for tribal council meetings. And also you'll find the tribal council resolution template. It's the eighth item down on the list. It's a template for writing tribal council resolutions. And we'll have that at, all these meetings we go to, we'll be posting those on the weekly update and the Facebook. And then the last thing that you'll find on the tribal council website, on the tribe's site, is resolutions. There you'll find trainings. The first training is writing a resolution, the second training is understanding the tribal budget.
Man, that's a whole other discussion.
We would like to, we would love to talk about it whenever you're ready.
I don't wanna be here for that one, I take a while. No, I, the truth is, when it comes to things like that, like I said, you know, I mean, if, if you're ever gonna serve on a board of directors somewhere, you should learn how to read budgets and things like that. And truthful, and the thing is, all this information that we're putting out and that we have done in past podcasts here is to make them, I, I, I would,